I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lucy, would you do the roll call, please?
Rich Barton?
Here.
Sarah Janinski? Ricky Schwartz?
Here.
Tidra Shank?
Here.
Jeff Snyder?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I need a motion to amend or adopt the agenda.
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Are there any questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Again, I want to remind you to review our board norms. That helps our group function and keep on track during our meetings. Next, we have our recognitions.
Great, and tonight we're recognizing Mr. Barton for completing his essential training for MSBA's training. That's an additional eighteen and a half hours outside of schoolwork time to meet that goal. So congratulations, Mr. Barton. I want to get your picture here. Okay, guys, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three, go. Yeah. Great, thanks. Congratulations.
Next, on the agenda, we have our public comments. And we have Carolyn Sprags to talk about redistricting.
Hello, Board, and everybody in attendance as well. I noticed that on Board docs, we were talking about redistricting for Daniel Boone for the new subdivisions coming in. And I just wanted to ask that the Board speaks on if you've spoken with the city councils or that subdivision builders to see if they're okay with that. What I'm looking at in the future is this is the third redistricting that I know of of new districts coming in. And while I totally understand the reasoning behind it, I just don't want to upset any of those builders by changing their district name once they've already gotten the plans to approve the subdivision in that area. As somebody new to the area, it's very easy to be like, oh, the new school. Like, we want to be at the new school. While that's something that I think both, all three of the elementary schools are great. Just something to keep in mind so that you don't anger the, you know, incoming builders. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the superintendent reports. We have technology program evaluation.
Yes, we have Mr. Greer here with us to talk about technology.
Good evening. Keep this short and sweet like always. Where we are today, we are one-to-one, fifth grade through 12th grade, with enough devices for K-4 to all have their own device. We have approximately 10% extra for every grade level, so for growth and attrition. We, the next line I drastically redid. We, with being one-to-one, we are down to six PC labs, and we have charging carts in all classrooms, K-4 through 7. We have approximately, and I'm going to edit that to be 57, about 50 computing devices on a five-year rotation. We took about 30 Chromebooks that were end-of-life, and we boneyarded them this, this week for spare parts. 315 access points and two wireless controllers to support Wi-Fi in every classroom. 255 cameras and video surveillance system capable of retaining video for approximately three weeks. We did have to add another server in order to maintain three weeks this year. 53 door access controls with more coming as soon as the parts arrive on the boat. 300 ASICs, voice-over-aid phones. Two internet connections in addition. The technology department supports 103 switches, 21 servers on those, or 62 virtual servers. A wet filter, a cash box, and a fire wall. Help desk statistics. The gray area is the highs and lows, all the way back to, I think I have statistics from '06. So as you can see, at the end of last year, we started setting new highs. And we're on the high end this year, including September, setting a new high. That is to be expected. More devices means more help desk tickets. We are keeping up. I'm not asking for any help. We're, we got our one-to-one help desk technician last year, and we're, we're doing fine. And the one-to-one lay initiative, the one-to-one technician, Bobby Albertson, was hired to maintain the district's one-to-one devices. One-to-one officially grades five through 12. Student keeps the same Chromebook, five through eight, and assigned a new one for grades nine to 12. We have Chromebooks for our students, K-4 to have one. One-to-one help desk tickets, 254 total last year, and so far this year, we're at 106. We lowered the optional insurance from $20 last year to $15 this year. The insurance account is looking good. Cybersecurity, we have, the technology department is working with Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, MSISAC, which is a subdivision of Homeland Security, and the Center for Internet Security to develop safe and secure technology procedures. Right now, we're using their malicious domain blocking and reporting tools. They are doing IP and domain traffic monitoring for us. They, we get best regular best practices. We get weekly security advisories, monthly webinars. And we will be participating in the annual nationwide cybersecurity review, which we will be... And this is the first time they're doing it. So after they gather all the information, they will compare us to other school districts, both in the state and nationwide. And they'll make recommendations for us to improve on before next year's work week. We have a district technology committee. Most of the time, if there's an issue that comes up, we just communicate via email. If something's more pressing, we, we actually won't meet. But we haven't met since COVID, so... And so our 22, 23 goals is to work with MSISAC and the Center for Internet Security to provide a more secure networking environment. Continue to work with the professional development committee to provide technology professional development opportunities for staff. And instead of increase, we are just looking to maintain the amount of technology devices and resources available to students and staff. The first time I've ever been able to just say maintain because we have enough devices. Thank you. Any questions, Frank?
The only question I have is what are we doing with those, like, empty computer labs? Is there nothing, like, and that might be something that I've started thinking about.
I think pretty much all of them have our classrooms now.
Conference rooms.
Conference room, yeah.
Space gets used, classrooms, right?
I mean, they, they've all been, they're not empty.
Yeah. I'm just curious what we're doing.
Yeah, like, the computer lab at Rebecca Boone is like three, the social worker and the counselor. Daniel Boone is the book room. Warrior Ridge is the counselor's classroom. Black Hawk still has a computer lab. That is one of the states. And then at High School, one, the one upstairs is a classroom, the one downstairs is a bed-comfort room.
You've retired eight years. That might as well have been 30 years, because that's amazing, the numbers that you have now.
Yeah, I mean, you guys have the chart over the last, well, practically since I've been here, so...
Well, I remember when computers first came out, and the students had to teach me how to turn it on. Or they'd see me at my desk, and they'd say, "Coach, you need help." Yeah. But that's amazing, the number there. You guys have really outdid yourself on that. From a personal standpoint, I respect that, and I know that, so thank you for all you've done for that.
The Chromebooks do make it easier.
I'm really curious next year to hear about what your feedback that you're going to be getting from what you've mentioned. There was a lot of letters, or there's the...
MSISAC.
Yeah, there is, there is something that you were explaining that you're going to be able to hear how we measure with other districts and what we can be improving in. So I'm excited and eager to hear what you hear and how we can continue to improve as a district. Even though maintenance is wonderful, it's, I'm curious what we can be doing differently.
Yeah, that'll be a normal part of my report going forward, since this is the first year we're doing it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ron.
And thank you for that, too.
Next, we have the financial update.
Okay, just finances, how we're looking right now. So operating revenues, about the same. Expenses are, are down a little bit right now, mainly because we have our food service facility that is a big chunk of our budget that we haven't paid on. So it's going to make a difference. The fund balances are definitely up, and that's due to the ESTR funding we received last year. As you can see, we're, we're starting to see our spending that down a little bit. You know, last year is the green. We have the kind of that flat line through August and September as we receive some ESTR funding. We didn't have that same trend this year because we didn't receive that. So we're going to probably continue to see the spending down until we receive our local funds in December, January. So that's all turning as expected. And so revenue, so locally, we're, we're up. It has a lot to do with school lunches. Now that people are paying for school lunches, it's a local thing. And also proxy funds are up. Counties about the same. State is about the same. Federal, of course, is a lot less because we didn't give the COVID money. So we receive less money this fiscal year, but everything's as expected. Expenses, kind of the same there. Salaries are very similar, slightly benefits are slightly pretty much the same. Purchase services are down. We just haven't bought as much stuff. We'll probably do that this month to get that. I imagine it'll come back. And supplies are also down a little bit. I think just what month did we purchase stuff, sort of thing. But everything's pretty, as expected. Capital projects, actually, ended the month last year in the negative because we had a lot of our summer projects. But we have gotten the money back from DESI, so we've, this is our ESTR III funds. Had to spend the money, and we give the money back. And so we got a million dollars back from DESI, so we're back to about $700,000, $800,000 in that fund. So we're okay. It's just, it was a cash flow timing. When the report was ran, when the money was there, so, but it's, everything's good. Any questions?
No.
Okay, hearing no questions, we'll move on to the consent agenda. If you want to take a look at that to see if there's anything you want to ask about before we vote on it. I'll move the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are there any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to old business, we have a policy approval section.
Right, so we've updated from the school colors and mascots, which is what we talked about a lot last month. So we've updated that based off that conversation. Of course, have more conversation about it today if you like. Then we have criminal background checks, who's changed the names, makes Dr. Ross the contact information. And then the summer hours, we just kind of cleaned up the language to make it a little bit more understandable. But that's policies for today.
I hope you approve the policies as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the policies as presented. Are there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. The policies are approved. Now we'll go to new business. And... I don't know what the first one is. You have to tell us.
Sure, it's a diligent contract. So Board Docs is been acquired by Diligent, and so this is the company replacing them. So we need a contract with them. And just, the reason we're switching, since we don't like Board Docs, we'll do something different. It's just, they've been bought out, and now we have to go with a different company.
Do you know if our data will transfer over? Because we have, like, years of...
Yes.
Meetings that I know I've accessed to see what was the last time we approved that policy? What was else that was going, you know, stuff like that. I've just researched.
Yeah, I don't know if they'll be stored on Diligent, but we will have a file of them somewhere to be accessed. Listen to me over there.
I'm going to start training next week, and so I'll ask that question for sure. I'm pretty sure when I did the webinar thing, that all of my information is still going to be on there. Just like in the...
And I, I understand that, like, it's not like we can choose to keep Board Docs. I'm just, it matters...
It's facing it out.
Yeah, it matters.
Since it's being bought out, basically, by this other company, they shouldn't be able to keep all the records, I think, so...
Right, so we're not 100% sure, so I don't want to say absolutely we'll be able to just go back and look at 2015 information, but we will have the records some way.
Yeah.
So if it's not part of the program, we'll figure out a way to back them up so we have information. It just might not be as concise and available as it is now.
So anytime you do these transfers, there's going to be some, things are going to work out.
Yeah.
And the cost is the same?
Cost is the same.
Cost is the same. I see it's just a one-year contract, so I guess if, once we're in and using the system, if we decide, for whatever reason, that we can start looking at alternatives.
I make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, if you're in favor, vote aye. Opposed, same sign. Infinite Campus.
Okay, this is another one that we didn't necessarily want to do, but we were forced to do. Cisk 12 is ending. Tyler Technologies is no longer continuing that product. So I feel like we need to find a new product if we're not going to have a student information system. And this really is kind of a big deal, because this really is the backbone of all of our, just, just grades. Everything we do, basically, around student information is tied to this. So this would be start for next school year. We would have Cisk 12 for the remainder of this year, but we'd like to go ahead and get started, getting Infinite Campus installed, training, everyone to understand how to use that this next semester. And then when we roll it out next year, we'll be good to go. There will be a little bit of additional cost. Our Cisk 12 contract ends in January, so we'll have to have a little bit of overlap there. So, and this is a little bit more expensive than Cisk 12. But this is the same program that Wright City uses next door. And I think we see a lot more people switching to this, because a lot of people were using Cisk 12. So we would like to go ahead and get this going as soon as possible to get this going. But we'll, we'll have a little bit of additional cost that wasn't budgeted for.
Is that the annual cost that's there?
Yes.
And you said that it's a little bit more than Cisk 12?
Yeah, well, a little bit more. It's like $20,000, I think, when we find $33,000 for Cisk 12.
So it's quite a bit more.
Right, right. But we really kind of don't have a whole lot of other choices.
No, I, I'm not questioning that. I know that, and I have...
And so the same question about historical information, because we've had Cisk 12 for a long time. And so we're working on a process on that. It'll be either stored on our server, or they can bring it over for a fee. So we're, we're still working through all that.
And this would impact our financial dashboard?
No, that will not. No, our financial dashboard's through a different program called Cispin. And so that connects to there. But in the same tone, though, Tyler Technology also has a program called Tyler Analytics, which is what is our engine to publish our financial dashboard. And they're no longer supporting that either, but they told us that we have that onsite. We're pretty proficient with it. Don't see any issues with not having support, so we'll be able to run it. But it's, that is no longer being serviced either.
So we'll still use Cispin, though?
Yes, we'll still use Cispin. Cispin will still be part of the district, yes.
So these two companies are not affiliated, Tyler?
They are not. Tyler is recommending that we go to, that we move to Infinite Campus.
So it's, it's a different deal than the Diligent contract?
Correct, correct.
And so we aren't going for a data for this?
Well, we could have looked at, we did do some investigation. There's basically two programs you can look at. Infinite Campus or Power School. When we just started talking about the backend and all the information that we would need from Power School, the reviews weren't good. And when we've looked at this, we've had some people do some webinars and do some research, and everyone's been very impressed. It felt like this would be a really good switch, and actually an upgrade, is what a lot of people feel like.
I, I feel that way because of my experience with it.
To the... Right.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Infinite Campus as presented.
Second. A motion's been made and seconded to approve the contract with Infinite Campus as presented. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Contract is approved. Staffing plan amendment.
Okay, so here, we're just making an adjustment to the staffing plan. What we'd like to do is switch a paraprofessional position to a worker-made position. Apparently, at Rebecca Boone, they don't have that position, but they do at Daniel Boone and Warrior Ridge. So this, I guess, is an opportunity to keep the staffing plan pretty neutral and keep the same services equal in all three elementary schools.
Can you say to me what a workroom aid is?
Sure, what it is, right, right, right. So they have copies and that sort of stuff in the workroom.
Do we still have a bunch of un, like, built paraprofessional?
Yes, yes.
And then, so if we were to move this, then we would be putting up an application for someone to become a workroom aid, or we have someone who's a paraprofessional who's already wanting to be helping?
This would be a new person. We, we think we have somebody who, the reason this kind of came out is someone today would like to do this, but we'll still hire, through the hiring process.
Yes, okay, so it would just be, it's not that we're moving someone like...
No, it's a vacant position to a position that we could potentially fill.
Okay, I understand.
I move the approval of the staffing plan amendment.
I'll second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve the staffing plan amendment. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay, elementary boundary adjustments.
All right, Lucy, if you would mind. Okay, so we've got some, just as new subdivisions come in and trying to balancing out our schools. As we know, Warrior Ridge is extremely full. Rebecca Boone has a lot of new housing going in in their subdivision already. So anything new, we want to try to balance out enrollment in our buildings. And so right now, there's an apartment complex going there at, by Paton Fields. And so that's, we'd recommend, no, again, no one is living in these places at this point, so it doesn't impact any current residents. This is just new, new subdivisions or apartment buildings going in. So recommend that, since Daniel Boone touches there on the other side of 47, that we would just move that section over to Daniel Boone to help, help with enrollment there, so Rebecca Boone doesn't become overcrowded. And then this one here is up for discussion right now, and it hasn't been approved from the city at this point. But since we're talking about it anyway, we might as well just do it. But, so this is still being debated, if this is going to come. This is at the outlet mall. There's apartment complex. We can discuss if there's going to allow that. This, there might not even be any students here ever, or there could be an apartment complex going there. So just thought we'd just kind of do this all at the same time. And we move that to Daniel Boone as well. Just got to extend that Daniel Boone boundary down to the mall. And then this one here, basically, the subdivision starts out in Daniel Boone subdivision, and our maps just cut through the field instead of actually going on the property lines. So this just takes the property line piece of that. But to answer Mr. Sprags' question, I have not talked to the builders themselves. Of course, this one was started out in Daniel Boone, and this one's not approved yet, but, but this one is approved. Not talked to the builders. But really just focusing on balancing our, enrollment in our buildings.
So this one that's on the screen now is a apartment complex?
Yes, that's correct.
That's approved and moving forward?
Correct.
And then the one, I'm going to say by the park, not that one. Is there a reason? Can't just square that off completely?
Well, no, because that's where the property lines are. So if, I wish I could zoom in here. There's, there's a subdivision there. And so this is basically back up to that subdivision where there are already houses. So it doesn't, it doesn't work, yeah.
Because there's current houses there.
Yeah, we don't want to switch any existing...
Until, like, an overhaul would happen.
Yes, if we get to the point where we're building a new building or something, then we may look at all the lines at that point.
Oh, for sure.
I'm curious about this, and, and you probably don't know the answer, but I'm just curious. I wonder how a builder or a realtor finds out what school, a particular property, what, what boundary that's within. Are we, like, have we adjusted on our website when we made changes?
Yep, that's all been up to date.
Is that the only way they would find out? Because one reason I'm asking is, I was just curious. And so I looked at one of the new properties that's on Pinkney, that's on the east side of Pinkney, that we changed before. And I looked on Zillow, one of the, the real estate websites, and it says Warrior Ridge.
Right, so that, I'm not sure how that gets...
And I don't know how that gets updated either. I'm just curious. That's what I'm saying.
Our website has an interactive map. You can type in your address and it'll...
Right.
But if you're looking at, well, when it says this, or a realtor says that.
And it happens all the time around our districts, because that's one of the big concepts in Winston going on, is that's up to the builder. That's not up to the school district, too. I mean, we, we'd be a good neighbor, but it's up to them to call, keep their stuff up.
Sure, that's even happened. I know some people that work here that said, oh, I thought this subdivision was in the Warren County R3 school district, but it's in Wright City or it's in Montgomery, and the realtor told me wrong. We do get those residency questions fairly often.
And I think there's a disclaimer on the website that says, check with the school district, but this is the information we have or something.
Yeah, I would encourage anybody building a new house or moving here, always call the school first. I know whenever I first moved here, it was in my contract that I had to live in the district. And so I called Transportation Department. I'm like, is this house, because it's in the school district? And they were able to look it up and tell me, yeah.
And they have never once in my 26 years on the planet, so they ask me, ask us in front of the, what district, what...
Elementary boundary that's within.
That's not an issue at that point. How many houses are scheduled on the one on the map?
Rich, I have a build, but my place is 87. I have it in this one here.
The one that's off of Warren.
Can you give me a second here? I can look that up. Let's see here.
Some of these have been sitting long ago. Now, I will say that in our meetings, the effect on the school district comes up from our board all the time, how we do take into account of how it does affect the community, the school district at the whole as well, in making these decisions.
Okay, I've got it here. Okay, so that is 97 homes in that, that spot there. And then up here, oh, wrong way, is the, this is going to be 272 apartments. So it's a pretty big apartment complex.
Yeah, so we, we've put some of the larger-scale ones into Rebecca Boone.
Right.
And so, because I was thinking, because most of the time, we're trying to help with the Warrior Ridge situation. And so this is, I believe, the first time that we're redistricting out of Rebecca Boone instead of out of Warrior Ridge. And so with that number, it makes a bit more sense, since Rebecca Boone has coming down the pike several hundred, hundreds of homes in some of the other spots that we've already redistricted.
Right, we've moved 300 homes into Rebecca Boone out of Warrior Ridge. And then they also have 272 apartments, I'm sorry, 242 apartments going up north. 272 are going, so this is... Two hundred and seventy-two are going, so this is two hundred and forty-two. The two hundred and seventy-two is going across Gas Street. And then there's another eighty homes going back there, too. So Rebecca Boone's going to be pretty full here in a minute.
So I'm, now that we're talking to crew, I'm understanding more. I, I understand that when someone is moving to a district or moving within a district, that they may have some pretty strong opinions about what elementary school they're going to... I, I do care about people's opinions, and I do want people to be excited about the school that their child's going to. And I believe in each of our buildings. Like, I believe that a child is getting a wonderful education in each of our buildings. And so because I genuinely believe that, then I care more about making sure that we're not overcrowding our buildings, making sure that we are utilizing the space that we have. And so, like, I do understand the thought of, like, talking with the builder, but I don't even know if our builders understand the intricacies or the opinions of different elementaries, because that's, it's like more of something that you would possibly gain opinions of by living here already. Or, and so I don't know how many of our builders, like, how many of those giant builders are global.
Well, going along with what Sarah is saying, it was important to me that we changed these before we had homes there. Because that way, when people decide to buy a home or rent an apartment in one of these that we have redistricted, they'll know that before they've committed to that area. And so for me, that was a bigger priority, to do that prior to people living there, because they will know when they buy or when they rent.
With the, with the housing crisis that we have, like, nationwide, I think that people are more interested in getting a home, like, that's going to suit their needs. But I could be wrong, because I'm not looking for a home right now, so.
But yeah, just so to reiterate, we have found a thousand new homes coming to us in the next, that have been approved, that we know are coming toward us, so growth is definitely on our doorstep.
I move the improvement of the boundary adjustments to include the new subdivisions in the Daniel Boone Attendance Center.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the new subdivisions, moving them to the Daniel Boone Attendance Center as presented. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now we will move on, policy first reads.
Right, we just found a name that needs to be changed in the policy. Ms. Lambert has left the district, and we need to switch that to Skirks. So that'll be the only thing on the agenda for next month.
We move down to miscellaneous. And we have celebrations. This isn't exactly a celebration, because I never like to see anybody leave our district. But Officer Clark is usually here, but he's not here tonight. And I would just like to thank him for all of the service and time that he has spent working in our district. He's taken another position, so he is leaving us. So I'm sad for us, but I'm happy for him that he's taking on some new challenges and new responsibilities. And we are going to miss him, and we wish him the very best.
Agreed. District softball, softball team won today in the summer finals, ten and nothing. They tend to run the Zoom on Houston, they'll be playing for the championship tomorrow at three-thirty, but I do know that Lillia Pullman will be this time. But I don't either, because they play after us, so I have... But congratulations to Coach Barry, his coaching staff, and the transfer district championship, what's going on?
Great.
I had the pleasure of getting to see the esports guys competing, and it was really a learning experience, as much as I have played Super Smash Brothers for decades, seeing how they were doing it and setting things up and competing against other schools, and just seeing truly like the joy and camaraderie of them playing. And they were playing individually, and it was just, it was fascinating, and so I'm excited for them. I know that colleges are offering scholarships, and so I'm just curious what's going to come out of it for our students. But if anything, the fun that they're having, and they are, they're competing, but they're like laughing and having so much fun. And so it was, it was awesome to witness that. The previous week, I was able to sit in a meeting with Dr. Kleinsmith and have a roundtable discussion with different students and hearing their perspectives. And something that I think is wonderful and grounding is to just see that really, they're going through so many similar things that all of us have experienced in those years. And I think sometimes people think that kids these days are so different, but really, they're navigating a lot of the similar paths that we've had to navigate. And so it was wonderful hearing their perspective and their ideas and the things that they are enjoying and the goals that they have for the school. They are so creative, and I just loved hearing from our students. And the last one I would say is that I got to attend a PTO movie night at Warrior Ridge, and it was well-attended and well-run, and it's just wonderful, once again, to be back in the building and seeing the children playing and making giant things out of glow sticks and just watching the movie together and seeing families spend time together. It was just a, it was a wonderful couple of things that I've been able to see just within almost a week's time.
For me, it seems like a long time ago, but I attended the Homecoming football game and was very impressed with the attendance, just the overall attendance at the football game. And, I mean, it was a plus that they won for the first time in the year, obviously, but that, I was just, I, I think I got there right at game time starting, and the parking lot was completely full, and there was people, a lot of people parking in the gravel parking lot. And honestly, I was extremely surprised, because I did not, for a winless team, typically, that's, that's not necessarily a big draw for, for the community. But I was, I was glad to see such a showing of support, I guess, from the community at Homecoming, because it, I went last year, and it, I mean, it was a big crowd last year, but not near as big as this year, so it was fun to see.
I got to go to the middle school football game on Tuesday night, they played Montgomery. And I must say, I'm just amazed that these football coaches can take thirty, forty middle school kids and organize them and do as well as they do. And I think both teams were absolutely heated coming into that game. I would just say, Martin's got some exciting times ahead, because they looked really good on Tuesday night. And it was exciting to see the coaches and how the kids behaved, and a good partnership on both teams, and it was a lot of fun.
All right, our next item is to set our next regular meeting.
Make a motion to set the next regular meeting on November tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to set our next meeting for November tenth, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Waiting for somebody to oppose it some week. We need to set the closed session. I move we set the closed session to immediately proceed the regular November tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to set the closed session to immediately proceed the regular November tenth meeting. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then my favorite motion of the night, adjournment.
To adjourn. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.